I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh God, we live very busy, busy lives. We live side by side. We share our community and sometimes we take too much everything, including each other for granted. Living our lives, going through our days, seldom thinking of what it means to be a community. Seldom stopping to think of the needs of our neighbors caught up in just being and providing for ourselves and our family. So we meet here today to the voices of our representatives of our city council to serve our community, to use our resources wisely, to represent all members of our community fairly, and make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and to the future, and to the rights and the needs of the individual and of the community. So as our trusted servants, we do seek blessings in all of our deliberations and all our efforts here today. We always gather the intentions of doing good work as we seek to represent fairly all those who have given us this task. So may all our efforts in that side be blessed, be guided by understanding and wisdom as we seek to serve with respect to all. May our personal faiths give us a strength, a strength for honesty in all the matters of us. And we thank God. We thank God, and bless is only given through Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you.
My name is one.
I think so. I would like to keep public input to five minutes.
First of all, I want you guys cleaned up last year in the fall around my building over there on Lincoln Street. Did an excellent job. It hasn't looked that good since they moved in those trailers over there to the north of me. Only problem is you went and sent me the bill. As you can see in the photograph from the county, my property ends basically on the north side of my building. This one's from the city. This one's a little off. But all the property you cleaned to the north where you took out all the trash and everything like that, all those limbs and all that stuff, that wasn't my property. That was the next door neighbor's property. Everything you cleaned up to the east was your property. But you did an excellent job, trimmed all the trees, looks great. Hasn't, like I said, hasn't looked that good since the same dude does more homes in there. And I want that bill removed from mine. Bill the wrong person.
How much is this?
Uh, you know where that tree that sits on Lincoln Street by the pole?
Yes.
My property is right behind there.
Okay.
My building is on my property, but the map that Gary just printed is a little off.
Yeah, and that's not correct.
That line was just on the edge of my building. Where you guys cleaned up and trimmed up and cleaned all that brush out was the neighbor's. I'd like two trees on mine.
Okay, we'll go ahead and send that to the bumper, City South. Thanks for your attention.
I'll wait for my pictures.
Okay.
Do we just get the picture copy later?
Chief, can I have some say? I was gonna say just a little later, but you look like you're pretty anxious. Spare him the torture?
Yeah, we just hired a new police officer, Arisha. And this was his first day today, so.
You're still here.
I thought about coming in here. Maybe I need to rethink this.
Maybe you guys could go around the table and introduce yourselves to him, so.
Kelly, you want to call this over here?
Okay, Kelly, and do you work for? Teddy Nelson, work for?
Blake Ebel, Ward three.
They're calling Ward three, I think. We know each other already.
Rory Peterson, Ward four. I don't think we've met. You arrested me this morning. Ed, do you think we'd Ward one?
Ebel, yeah, Ward one.
Or Friesen, Ward two.
And I'm actually, I don't have a ward. I'm terrified that I'm actually Ward two, not four. Oh, in my own.
You're welcome to be here today.
I'm sorry. Feel welcome to all thank you for coming here, so. Really excited. Thank you. Good luck.
All right, any other public input? Any amendments to the agenda? Second? Move on to the mayor's report. Would like everybody to keep the Alton family in their prayers. That employee's son that was killed in a four-wheeler accident this past weekend is. I tell you, just keep their family in prayers. March meetings, any changes or additions to this?
Uh, no.
But we have the meeting next month.
Yes, five thirty.
Okay, we'll sort out the study. Consent agenda, was yours our?
Wanting to adopt.
Second.
Roll call?
Mark?
Yes.
Eno?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Skelly?
Yes.
Okay, I was gonna do the new officer, I was gonna do the new officer under appointments, but we've taken care of that already. Thank you. Clang zoning, anything?
No action.
And seeing there's no old business, move on to new business. A, the KVA position number one. And can I retain motion please? How about you to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
We just need a voice. Yes, all is prepared?
Aye.
Of those names on, are prepared? Computer, this. And who's gonna discuss this? Or we have a question first?
I'll make the motion to approve Reach Solutions in the amount of sixteen thousand eight hundred twenty-three dollars for ten desktop computers, ten upgrades of MS Office.
Is there a second?
Second.
Need clarification on this?
Excuse me. Actually, we scheduled a replace every four years, but last year didn't have sufficient funding budgeted to fully replace everything. This would, well, everything, all apartments were replaced except for here in City Hall. This will replace the hardware and also Microsoft software for all the hardware in this building.
Roll call please.
Kelly, yes. Betty, yes. Blake?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Eno?
Yes.
Next item is the council meeting livestream proposal. Do you want to give us?
Actually, it's Greg.
Okay. You want to give us just a rundown on this as well?
This is an option. Right now, we probably broadcast out over channel thirteen. This would allow us to livestream council meetings. It would also archive them so that they could be watched at any time. Could building garbage page access it that way. And, you know, it's a little piece of hardware that just works with our existing camera. It would then allow it to be livestreamed. And I guess I would look it up to any questions.
Is that a motion?
Motion to approve the Box Cast proposal for broadcast streaming equipment and service for a total of twelve months, for a total of twelve months, at a cost of one thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars and eighty-six cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, questions? I have a couple of questions. One, does that plug in to the sound system as well so the viewers can hear the microphones?
No, it does not. I've solicited a bid from, a bid to provide the microphones on three different occasions. We had a couple of different samples that we tried. Part of the problem is the distance for the microphone from speakers. That's part of the issue. Part of the issue is not actually talking directly to the microphone when we're speaking, or talking too softly so that the microphone doesn't pick up.
But if we, I ask my question, if we go to this investment, or have this investment, will people, do you even listen to it or hear it? Well, what would it be if it hears? That's my concern, I guess.
I don't think we'll have a problem because we're using, we'll tap it off of this mic. Is that true, Greg?
Correct.
And we don't have any problems at all with the archived recorded version that we're doing right now coming off of that mic and recorded onto an SD card. So I don't see any problems at all with this microphone picking up all the sound in the room.
Is that different than the live TV broadcast?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause I've listened in a few times on Zoom or whatever.
And that simply doesn't work.
Yeah, you can't hear anything.
Yes.
Or very little, I should say.
But if you watch the YouTube version that's recorded here and uploaded, the sound is actually fine.
Did you have any questions?
I can wait for you to go in that way. I guess my other question is, if this would be an attempt to make us more readily available to all citizens, not just Cox and Travers, is that a goal?
Yeah, a big goal, yes. You know, if you look at the national trends, even, you trip, watch our franchise leads, based upon that, you can tell subscribers are going down as other services, whether it be Robo, Apple TV, things like that. Pick up, you know, there's a shift in viewership to more online.
The fiscal note says that there is five thousand dollars budgeted for upgrading the broadcast equipment, so is this considered part of that upgrade then?
Yes.
So the way the funding is allocated is parceled out from two different funds? And that's the way the budget allocated is?
Well, it's parceled out to two different funds because one's a piece of equipment, the other part's a service.
I see, okay.
Yeah, that's why it was allocated.
Any comments, questions? Roll call please.
Mark?
Yes.
Eno?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Next item is the IBTS agreement for inspection services. You want to give us a rundown on this before we go further?
A rundown on this, or is something to replace me or this? There, we've had a lot of conversations that come into consideration to this really complicated, it's gonna take a long time. It would be the nature of the reason, sorry. I suppose without questions.
Is this what, what we had, a study session? Is this the same process? Well, although, pardon me, I think it would be too bad after raise those prices in, but I think it shows what it really meant in the past.
Hopefully, we help the market, nurture the market, so to speak.
I personally was impressed with the recommendations. I would make the move to accept this proposal and move on with this recommendation. Is that clear, Matt?
I agree. That was a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, also, I did notice on some of the forms that are on page B4. Is there B4? And also on page D2. When you get down to the second category, partly healthcare institutional or detention, as you go down and through there, it lists different square footagees, and it jumps from one hundred thousand to a million one, then back to three hundred thousand. So I think there's an error that that probably should be a hundred thousand. Then the next column would be a hundred thousand and one to three hundred thousand.
That's correct. That's what it's supposed to be.
Pardon me?
That is the way it's supposed to be, yes, like you said.
Wait, not reading, man. But there were, just on this one form, it's listed in there a couple of different, two or three times, and it was the error.
This is, this is an old master agreement that they signed. We actually have a copy that's corrected for right before that will be the one we sign.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we look at the new copy, that those areas.
We will ensure that they are correct. I went through it myself, so, and I didn't catch that, but I'll look.
I just got lucky, I think.
Well, I went through the new one, so I hope that's.
Okay. Here, we have a motion and second, is that correct?
Yes.
One thing I do want to point out, during their, during the study session, they talked about the permitting software. What's actually, what they talked about with the contractor, the ability to log in, get their own building permits, et cetera, was going to cost approximately eighteen thousand dollars a year. They have a free version where the contractor would actually have to go through us and do it. Cost wise, we can't justify spending eighteen thousand dollars a year for how many building permits a year?
Sixty-five or seventy.
Sixty-five or seventy. So the proposal you have in there is not for the full-blown permitting software suite.
Any other questions, comments?
I guess just confirm, while we will be required to increase these fees over time, the increase will still be within reason and will be comparable to other municipalities in our.
Because building permit wise, right now, we're considerably below the area market in terms of building.
And the permits will be what covers these fees.
Yes, correct.
While there will probably have to be an increase, hopefully, it will still be a reasonable increase. Have you defined reasonable? Is it gonna be comparable to other municipalities?
Yes, yes. It'll be comparable to our area and our region. And we will actually see for next council meeting in order to modify our building permit fees. This will all go into effect, May one? April one? April. Tim's working on having IBTS representative come and have a contractor meet to talk about a change in process. And that we're going to modify our system. And how we're gonna transition from what I'm doing to what they do, so. There's a question, any permits right now?
What does that mean? They've gotten a permit paid to feed, but haven't built it yet?
Or they're part of the process. Or in the process.
You know, they have plenty of other clients in our area? Yep.
Tim, you can notch your. They have not, that I'm aware of, and they have hired someone, and I guess we better put this out there too. They have not been able to hire anybody yet. They are working on it. In the meantime, they're agreeing to have to come out of the Kansas City area and with their respect here, and there will be a hundred dollar surcharge for travel and travel expenses until they get someone hired.
And is that on the consumer?
Yes.
And do you think there's any pressure on them to have a representative on here? Maybe they just are bringing them from Kansas City and have a.
No, I think there is pressure, because the business model calls for them to expand and try to bring four, five, six communities into a package, and that's their business model. That's how they do business. I think the pressure there for them on their own. Wish I could say the report that we can push. Not only from us and our unions, but the reason that there's a master agreement with the Lincoln Kings and municipalities who conducted a survey of needed services by municipalities in the state of Kansas. In most communities, five thousand and under in a way, which are roughly eighty percent of communities in the state of Kansas, lack building department services. So this is an effort by the league to help their members fill that gap that the Kansas City feel individually. And so there is the desire and the hope and the effort to get someone hired. Because not only will it serve communities like us, I know they're also talking first about planning services, but it will also help them expand their model faster because then they can sit there and tell, have more clients say, well, yeah, we have somebody with an hourly draway or something like that, so.
Anything else? Roll call?
Kelly? Yes. Betty? Yes. Blake?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Eno?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Dunn, I think you're up again. Just be on the stand by meeting screen.
Yes, this is the stand by thing that we did the city tower with, the toll service corporation. And because we've had more recently had a paint job on the stand pipe, the structure of this agreement is a little bit different. It's a maintenance agreement for the first four years. And then based on the condition of the tower, they assume that they will have to paint it in the fourth year. So then, so you'd have three annual fees of eighteen hundred dollars a year, which is the main standard. And then in the fourth year, there would be the charge where they actually paint the tower at sixty-eight thousand four hundred dollars. And then after that, you would begin the annual paint service fee. That's where you're paying, you're paying ahead for the paint job within ten years. So it goes from eighteen hundred dollars to sixty-eight thousand seven hundred forty over the course of five years. And then from seven thousand to forty, at that point, you're, you would be based on producer pricing actually after that.
Do we have a motion? Sound move? Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions?
It's sound over call talking about the other water tower, it's just the one water tower. Am I, anybody else?
That's a question?
I said, I don't remember, I don't remember talking about the one water tower.
Yeah, they talked about the in-town tower. That's the agreement that we have in place with the utility service.
And would you refresh my agreement?
So this is for the stand pipe out in the country, in our well fields, a separate tower, a separate agreement.
But I understand that. I don't recall talking about anything other than in-town tower, so this comes as a surprise to me, so I must have missed something.
We did mostly talk about that. I hold it to time that if things were going well, then I would bring this one forward. It makes a good sense for this tower to be the best for the in-town tower.
Yes.
This would also replace an agreement we had with Cunningham. I can't remember still late, Cunningham.
Sandblaster.
Sandblaster. The last board that we had done was on the standing pipe out at the well field. It was, I can't, even less than satisfactory is a way of an understanding. I mean, it was extremely poor. The efforts they made to fix it were substandard. And so in many ways, they were just exchanging one expense for two, accompanying two of that expense.
And the, I mean, is it, the expenses are comparable then? I mean, I, I don't recall the numbers, I just remember the numbers were very big for the contract to do in-town, and then I see this layered on top of that, so I'm.
One of the one hundred forty-four thousand, and that would be a big job this year. We've already secured perfectly, she probably hasn't been through this. So this, put paint price on this other sixty-eight thousand, just about half. That's just gonna be what it takes to paint that tower.
So are these kind of staggered, so?
Well, what happens is, like on the existing water towers, a hundred thirty-four thousand painted this year. And then we'll make an annual payment, and then in ten years, it shouldn't be another hundred thirty-four thousand.
They're fifteen thousand per year plus producer pricing next.
Yes, yeah, yes. The difference is, in year one, they're not painting the stand pipe. It'll be year four, so it's seventeen hundred, and I'm going, eighteen hundred per year for the first four years, then it's sixty-eight thousand, and then it's seventy-two hundred per year after that. So then in that next year, it'll be just, or the tenth year after the paint, painting, it'll be seven, it'll be plus producer pricing.
So the way that's set up, we're not going to end up painting the tower to check that tower in a stand pipe at the same time?
Correct.
Then it'll never matter again, because it will always have that annual fee as a whole. They will never pay for another paint job.
My question would be then, what are we getting for the eight hundred, or eighteen hundred dollars a year for the first four years?
Respectively, depending on the maintenance needs.
So it's essentially a maintenance contract until we get the paint?
Well, they take over everything. If there's any damage occurs from, say, ice coming up and down, any damage that occurs, it's on them from this point. Well, they take over everything. If there's, if there's any damage that occurs from, say, ice coming up and down, any, any damage that occurs, it's on them from this point.
Okay. Anything else? Jerry, roll call?
Mark?
Yes.
Ema?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
We'll give you, you get that in there. Yes? Uh, next item is the West Swenson ditch cleaning proposal. Have to be careful when you say that one. Go ahead.
Okay.
It's your own goal.
The West Swenson has always been an issue with drainage. It's so flat. Problem is that it backs up on the fire street and, you know, it ruins the sub-rate there, but the paving is always been a problem. And now we're scheduled to repaint that hundred block of fire street this year, so we would like to.
Five hundred, five hundred block, yes.
I knew it. We would like to paint the five hundred block. We would like to take care of the water problem so that the paving is not subjected to all that water. And the vast point is, is we don't have a piece of equipment that actually is very narrow ditch and people's yards. And the piece of equipment they have, well, it's got an articulating module where he can go in and shake it as he, as he activates so that really won't damage product. He'll excavate down past the last house there from that point on, depending on the rest of the mission, if we can do it in the career. We'll have a lead in there.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to motion to approve point construction to clean the West Swenson Street ditch in that amount not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
It's a unique piece of equipment, so therefore just the single bid.
Yeah.
No one else has one?
I will send the one that's with someone in there.
You have a discussion? Are you guys, Jerry?
Uh, Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ema?
Yes.
Mike? Mike? Where's the Mike is?
Chris, looks like you have a, some hardware that you didn't have last time I saw you.
Well, this is our safety mascot for the month.
We've got a safety train this week. I wanted to give you guys what not to do so we can work safe. Okay, I'm just going to leave that alone. But, Critter Guards?
Critter Guards, in an ongoing effort to try to reduce power outages. Um, we've looked at, Critter Guard is the, the brand name. They're a wheel that fits on an end, and then there's five little independent spinners in between. Um, we've got an area up at the old North South that is a very notorious area for causing power outages from squirrels. So we kind of figured out what we need to do to put those in there to try and reduce these power outages. So we'd like to, an approval up to eighteen hundred dollars for these Critter Guards to try and reduce the power outages.
They're currently entertaining this though.
If you want to be, yes, they are. They are. They do do a good job of it.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve up to eighteen hundred dollars for Critter Guards from Power Equipment and Sales Company.
Okay.
Uh, you said eighteen hundred, but the actual recommendation says twelve hundred and sixty plus sales tax, which would probably be a lot less than eighteen dollars.
After I, we've kind of figured out what we need, and then I kind of thought we maybe better have a few extra just in case we come up with an area up there that didn't, we didn't anticipate, so I figured if we get sixteen.
And all the ones in the city that we have done so far, I mean, would your department feel that they have done their job?
They have, these are really kind of different type of protection. Most of it, the guards would put on, fit over fuses and that type of stuff. These actually fit on the line, and so when the squirrel's trying to come across the line, it, it's a barrier, and it makes it almost impossible for them to cross.
It's like running on arrows.
Yeah, exactly. And as you saw in the video, it, it's pretty hard for them to do that. This company does make a same type of device that's on the pole, but what we did, we found some, it's a plastic wrap which you put on the pole. And I think that was a lot cheaper than this, and I think it will work even better. It's, I think, thirty inches tall. So we'll be able to put it down on all poles, and then this will take care of the line, so.
I watched for a number of years the squirrels trying to get to our bird feeder, and they are incredibly creative.
They, yes, they find a way.
That's fine.
They find a way, yeah, so.
I did see a video that you hook a slinky to your pole.
Yeah.
And you follow the slinky. It looked like it worked, so that's another idea for you.
Why don't you put slinkies up there?
We have a motion and a second there, aren't we? I lost record. All right, Jerry, roll call?
Yes.
Ema?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next item. And yes, chief?
Well, we've been doing some studies on handguns replacement for the police department, and basically came down to the Glock seventeen, which is a nine millimeter handgun, and the full-size generation four. And the motion would be to accept the purchase of eight of those seventeen, Model seventeen Glocks. A cost of one thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars to GT distributors and nine hundred fifty dollars to chief supply for holsters.
So moved? Is there a second?
Second.
If my question is, going from a forty to a nine, kind of, I use my estimation, kind of going back for size wise, was there a lot of difference if you went to a forty-five, from forty to a forty-five?
No, we, we looked at nine, forty, and forty-five, and the ammunition that they make available now, of course, to use, you can find that the ballistics are pretty much, I mean, they're running pretty even. It just depends on the type of ammunition you're using in the weapon. And so if we felt that we purchased the correct ammunition, the nine millimeter would be better because, you know, larger magazine capacity.
What is the capacity on the nine?
Seventeen.
That's fifteen on the forty-five?
It's seven. But, right. And it's thirteen in the forty, and then the forty-five is twelve?
Twelve? Yeah, what I have is three hundred. Capacity.
Yeah.
My question also is, what about the guns we're displacing here? What happens to them?
Well, we have, they would be offered for trade to GT distributors to help cut down the cost. And we've talked to the officers about perhaps looking at selling the guns directly to the officers for them to carry for off-duty if they wish. At the price that they're offering from GT distributors.
And that's something that was amenable to them?
Yes.
You don't want this thing floating around?
I, I would predict that the weapons will probably all be purchased by the officers.
Okay. That's what I suppose.
And is there, I just know that some corporations have policies where if you're going to sell something that's a property of a corporation, everybody has to have an equal opportunity. Is there any reason to think that that is any kind of a problem? And is there any liability with a weapon is purchased by an individual and warranty or function or anything like that?
Uh, we and I have a policy that, that we have no real written policy that covers this. Typically, under standard items, if we were going to do something like that. I think these are more specialized, more specialized tool of this particular trade, if you want to call it that, that either, if the officers don't buy them, we don't offer them for sale to anybody else within the city. We would get them to the, to the distributor.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. My question is, you indicate that they're showing where, I'm assuming that's not because you have to discharge them often while on duty and.
Right, mostly upon the practice range, that's correct.
Okay.
How often do you qualify?
Um, we've been averaging two a year, but we also shoot with the sheriff's department, so that number actually shoots up to four, five rounds a year. So every time the sheriff's department needs, we, we like to go out and shoot in town as well.
And Jerry, how many rounds per?
It depends on how big shot.
You'll hit four, I'm sure.
For you, it would be just very few rounds.
Very few rounds.
I guess one would try to make that you'll, you could consistently run five hundred rounds a year?
Yes.
And, and that's if the officer doesn't go out and practice on his own?
Correct, and we do, you know, we do encourage officers to go out and practice on their own. I know that the person officer special deals are very normal range for officers to learn to shoot. So, and my officers have deal with that.
We have a new house, but are?
Uh, we did, but we don't still embarrass anyone.
Okay.
What brand ammunition do you guys use?
Oh, I can't see.
Gold Dot.
Uh, we used to use Gold Dot. We don't anymore. So it's similar, it's similar to the Gold Dot, but it's, it's not the same.
Any other comments, questions? We have a motion and a second one is for, is that, roll call?
Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ema?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Thank you.
No, just stay there. Executive official?
Yeah.
Let's give you, let you go to our executive office, our executive.
Well, I didn't have a lot on my plate before tonight on public safety. I did have some reports that there were, that someone going around some portion of the city taking mail, mailboxes. And we talked to the individual who said that they saw this occurring, but we have not received any reports from anyone in the city that they're missing mail. So I thought this would be a good opportunity for the public to hear if they can check with their postal service and find that they weren't receiving email to contact the police department so that we can make this report. Well, I have to have a victim pulled up, so I wanted to make sure that I got that out in the public, too.
I saw that on social media, and I, my first thought was, I hope they called the police. Did they contact you, or did?
Yesterday.
Okay.
Curled Friday. Contacted yesterday, so, yeah, um, which is, we don't really like that they wait, but it's pretty common.
But if it were only one day, you very well might not realize you had, you had, you lost something.
That's correct, yeah. So I would say if you come out and you don't have any mail in your mailbox, contact the postal service and see if you had any glitter to see perhaps what it would take. Other than hiring a new officer busy with that.
EMS building?
EMS building, they're, they're, they're parts of concrete, but I haven't seen any activity. Seen much of it today. It's too windy.
Sure. Fire crews busy?
Fire crews have been busy. They had a, they were helping the, with the fire at Overwatch. They sent a crew, and then they had a relief crew, and I don't have any relief crews we send. We had a fire today at the Boneyard, and then we had a maneuver pile, a car pile, of fire today, so just going to, it's that's all. We've got a full spectrum in the fire service.
Thanks.
Today, see if you can set them up.
I'm sure. All right, you got me up here to. Some of the works.
I'm coughing myself. We're running a little bit of a problem over a section where we've done the, there, over there, this is a trail. They've excavated it out, and there were, there were three rails that we entered there. Every one of them, there was a rail, one is a really major question. They've excavated at least two feet deep so far, and. Yeah, and, and they're laying it out on the ground. Of course, we haven't really been drying other, but they aren't drying up so well yet, so it's delaying the job, and hopefully we don't get to the point where they feel like they need to make a claim for, you know, circumstances that weren't expected. Anyway, they're working on it, and as soon as we can get in there and forth, then we'll start walking the trajectory. We're hoping it'll be like three, three and a half week project, but right now they hold up. Other than that, this is my last time of doing this. I'm happy about that. And I guess I just want to tell you that I think your, your public support department is going to be just fine. We've got some good people in place, and they're working together, there's plans, and I, I think they're, they're going to be just fine. Any questions?
Thank you.
It's not enough to say thank you for your service. Sort of, we thank you for your.
Oh, very well.
CDB, Sasha, I'm going to give that one.
Probably not. No, I can't retire quite yet, so that won't happen tonight. Uh, we've had some, just continue to have good things going at the conference center. And I was able to attend a meeting, or I was invited to attend a meeting in Lyons about a week and a half ago at the Celebration Center. I had not been there before, and so I really didn't totally know what to expect. I mean, they had an arena, so I know it will be a little bit different than our conference center. It would probably be a little bit more casual environment. But I want you to know, for those of you that have never been there, there is just no comparison. When we talk about what we have in Linsport, there's nothing in the area that's like it. I've been in a lot of other places, even if you're in Newton, and it's very different. And I think part of it is the vibe our community gives to it. But, and also when I was at the Celebration Center, just the service that we received, well, they were pleasant people. It just wasn't to the standard that we have here. The food was not, it was just a very, very different environment altogether, and one that I would not want to have to, to have here, so I think that was really good. And one of the things that I think we wanted to bring to your attention tonight was the partnerships that we feel like that we have with a lot of city staff in order to make the things happen that do at the conference center. Uh, just this last week, Kevin went over, as we were beginning to look at some of the ins and outs of replacing computers and, and different, uh, technology equipment with Reach Solutions. We realized that the projector had never been hooked up to, uh, for an HDMI cable. We had never had anyone need it yet. And so, um, Kevin was over and taking CC and Tyler out for him, so that she, we were able to, to look at that and Reach Solutions to get in and figure out what they need to figure out. Weddings, we tell you, are a big deal for us. We're booking more weddings all the time, but they're really kind of maintenance a lot of the time. This past week, we had a wedding, and we're with our parents, and requested that all of the napkins on the table seat be folded. That was over three hundred napkins. So, um, Linsport Laundry, they brought us all the napkins. Um, Amy just went through and restacked what was there, so that they can be used for another event, already folded. And, uh, Kate came over, um, from the direct department and helped fold the napkins. So all of those things came together. And helped unpacked chairs, too. We got a bunch of new chairs this past week. They were supposed to be in W in December, I think, is that not correct? January. Long time ago. So we were calling, and she was saying we got, have these, got to have these, and they got them there Friday before the Saturday event. So that all came about, and just, just in time, and it worked out really well. Uh, the other thing I wanted to let you know, and we also pulled from community people that help us. And just this past council meeting, I went to Mark, and I told him I needed to pick his brain about some things with technology. And the very next day, he made time for Amy and I, and we sat down in my office, and we talked about some new marketing techniques that we would like to try. But not only did he give us great information and help us learn some new things there that we had questions about, but he also offered some really great solutions, we feel like, for streamlining some of the processes, particularly with email at the conference center. So I'm hoping by the end of this week, we'll be implementing the process for Amy, so that that will make her, her job a lot more effective. So I want to thank you for that. And, um, each of you do those things for us frequently, but, um, that was one in particular that we just really needed. And that knowledge that you have, and it was really helpful to us. Any other questions? You have?
Was that Mark or Mike?
It was Mike.
Sorry.
So I asked him if he could come in for three minutes, and he was there well at an hour, I believe. So it was, it was a really good discussion. He left, and Amy and I looked at each other, and I said, okay, that was well worth the time, that was really good. So we felt like we learned a lot, and, uh, again, those younger mind brains were really good.
Questions? Or the CDG?
Any other questions?
I've got a question that I got asked from this morning, this ad hoc meeting. You were talking about the appearance of downtown, being inviting or not inviting, various prillings, and a discussion of whether blinds are down or up, and it was discussed that maybe that was a council decision to keep the blinds down. And I'm just wondering, is that true, or?
Blinds.
Or what?
Blinds, windows, or the, uh, central building?
We had discussed that because of a couple things. Um, there were a lot of concerns with the cross beams that were done as part of the, um, right, help me with word, I shouldn't have this. Cause I suppose all the time, project, it's like we, we look at our costs and cut our...
The value engineering project.
Value engineering.
And then the cross, we, for structural, uh...
And the looks of those, we're not loved by everyone, and so we talked about keeping, um, curtains closed for that reason, to help cover that. Um, also, we had issues with sun fading on the furniture. We talked about that, we could allow them to, the furniture that was in there, in order to keep it for as long as we would like to. We wanted to keep those closed. The curtains also do not open all the way across, they open in sections, and so as you open this, they have odd openings in them. And there was just some concern as to the looks of that, what that looked like. And so due to council, it was not voted on by council, but due to council input, we decided that we would do this. Your thoughts on that?
Oh, I was just gonna say, I believe that the discretion of the managers of the city and the central building, and I just... I second that opinion.
No, we really do try to keep you happy, so.
Wow.
We did listen.
I've been in several buildings recently, though, that have those ex-members in them, and it doesn't... I mean, I don't think it's, it's bad at all. It might have been better to not have them.
A big topic initially, so.
I know.
Just decided we would. Follow, follow the suggestions.
Anybody else? If you'd like to go to work, ladies. Appreciate it. All right, next item. There a word? Next, next item. Twenty-one, turn. Oh, there you go. Hold the paper. Thank you.